I call this special town meeting to order. I've been informed by the people checking people in that as of 7:30, we had 114 people registered to vote in attendance and therefore a quorum is met. It's first order of business if you would please join me in welcoming. We have two of our Boy Scouts from Troop 34 here tonight to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We have Connor Keen, who's a Life Scout and a Senior Patrol Leader, and Liam Keen, who is a Star Scout. So if they could please join me up here and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Will you all please join me in the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two.
As we've been doing in the last several town meetings, just want to pause for a moment and remember some of the people who have passed away since we last met. Two town residents who devoted themselves to the town, James Wild and Judith Hatch. And I'd also like to recognize the passing of Senator Thomas Kennedy, who was from Brockton but represented Hanson for many years in the state senate. And unfortunately, he passed away very recently. So if we could just have a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. And also, I'd like to give a special welcome and thank you to Rich LaCamera, who has been very ably acting as the town administrator for the last several months. He was instrumental in putting together this town meeting and helping out the selectmen. And I just wanted to acknowledge him and to thank him very much for his help. Also in attendance tonight, we have our state representative, Josh Cutler, who declined an opportunity to speak, so thank you very much. We also have two of the candidates for state senate that'll be running in the special election to replace Senator Kennedy. I'll acknowledge Representative Jeff Deal and Representative Michael Brady. I would remind everybody that there is a special election tomorrow. The polls will open at 7 o'clock and be open until 8 o'clock. That's at the McQuinn School. Turnout, I hope, will be robust, so please come out and vote. Well, I can hope. Couple of other quick announcements. Troop 34, the Boy Scout troop in town, will be having a pumpkin sale October 17th and 18th on the town hall green. They'll also be camping out that night, so no shenanigans, no trying to take the pumpkins when nobody's looking. But please show your support for the Boy Scouts. And also, this Friday, October 9th, we will be having the Pack the Pantry auction. That's to benefit the Hanson Food Bank. It'll be held at the Meadowbrook Restaurant from 6 to 9. There is no fee, but there will be an auction, so bring your checkbook. To begin, I have to make the announcement that tonight's rules will be taken from the parliamentary procedure of town meeting time, so if you would like, please take out your copy and follow along. We have several important articles tonight. We'll try and get through them as quickly as we possibly can, as I've been asked by several town residents. On the other hand, I do anticipate a decent amount of debate on a few of the articles. As always, what I would ask you to do is please go to the microphone, or if you can't make it to the microphone, I'll ask somebody to bring it to you. But if you could please state your name and your address. And please, try not to be repetitive. We'll move as quickly as we possibly can, but make your argument. Don't make it a second time. If you're thinking of the same words, say, "Maybe I don't need to say that again." And we'll hear everybody's point of view and we will move on. Finally, there are several articles in here that require a nine-tenths vote or a two-thirds vote to be legally binding. And therefore, what I'm going to do is ask the consent of town meeting right here at the beginning that I be able to make that determination on a voice vote. Very often, these are done unanimously or maybe with one or two dissenters, and if that's the case, then I'll declare it a nine-tenths or a two-thirds vote. If anybody calls it into question, of course, we'll go to a recorded vote. That is not a problem. Just make your wishes known. So can I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor, say "aye." All those opposed, "nay." The ayes have it. Thank you very much. And with that, we will get going. Article 1, Mr. Howard.
I move the town vote to transfer $2,630 from free cash to pay unpaid bills for fiscal year 2015.
Do we have a second? Seconded. Mr. Howard?
There are a few unpaid bills from various departments which were received after the end of the fiscal year 2015.
And I would just point out to everyone that this requires a nine-tenths vote. Is there any discussion on Article 1? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 1 signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed, "nay." The ayes have it by a nine-tenths vote. Article 2, Mr. McGann.
I move the town vote to authorize the Treasury Collective to establish an Other Post-Employment Benefits, OPEB, trust account in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 32B, Section 20.
Seconded. Mr. McGann.
The National Financial Reporting Standards requires that the town disclose accrued liabilities relative to other post-employment benefits. The most recent actuarial valuation calculates the liability to be over 12.5 million. Establishing the OPEB trust will allow the town to set aside funds as part of the budget process to address this liability.
I'm sorry. I've been told that some people didn't hear. Could you please just give the explanation again in the microphone, sir?
The National Financial Reporting Standards requires that the town disclose accrued liabilities relative to other post-employment benefits. The most recent actuarial valuation calculates the liability to be over 12.5 million. Establishing the OPEB trust will allow the town to set aside funds as part of the budget process to address this liability.
The motion having been seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 2 signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Opposed, "nay." The ayes have it. Article 2 is adopted. Article 3, Mr. Young.
Article 3, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate $96,044 to supplement appropriations previously voted at the annual town meeting of May 2015 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2015 for various town departments as printed in the warrant.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded. Mr. Young.
Mr. Moderator, are we going to take this line by line? If we do, and there's a question on it, I would ask the department, yield to the department head so he can explain the variance, if that's fine with you.
Very good. What I'll do is I'll go each line item, the far-left column, I'll call it out. If no one wishes to speak, or I'm sorry, if anybody would like to speak to it, please say "hold." If no one says "hold," I will consider it adopted. And anything held, we'll go back and you can speak on it. Item 1, adopted. Item 2, adopted. Item 3, adopted. Item 4, adopted. Item 5, adopted. Oh, did I hear a "hold" on that one? Item 5 is held. Item 6, adopted. Item 7, adopted. Mr. Kemmett, would you be so kind to take the microphone to Mr. Sutter? So now we'll return to item 5 for any questions or discussion.
Who is the tree warden now?
Tree warden would be Mr. Brown.
Is he a registered arborist?
He doesn't have a...
Yes, he does.
No, please direct all conversation through me.
He's now appointed, not elected.
Would, Mr. Young, would you like to respond?
Yeah, the tree warden is still an elected position under the town bylaws, Towne Hansen.
Any further questions, Mr. Sutter?
I'd like clarification from the town attorney.
There is no such requirement under law.
Any other questions or comments on item 5? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 5 signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed, "no." The ayes have it. Now, we'll vote on the entire article inclusive. All those in favor of Article 3, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed, "nay." The ayes have it. Article 3 is adopted. Article 4, Mr. Wajdag, or I'm sorry, Mr. McKinnon.
I move the town vote to transfer a sum of $10,000 from free cash added to stabilization.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded. Mr. McKinnon.
This money is used to increase our stabilization, a rainy day fund. After we transfer $10,000, our stabilization fund is, will be at $1,041,678.
Any questions or comments on Article 4? This requires a two-thirds vote, so all those in favor signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed, "nay." The ayes have it. By a two-thirds vote, Article 4 is adopted. Article 5, Mr. Scott.
Article 5, I move the town vote to transfer $3,000 from free cash to purchase and install a secured exterior drop box for the delivery of tax and bill payments.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Scott.
These funds are used to purchase and install a permanent exterior drop box, which will afford residents the convenience of delivering their payments or other town hall departmental correspondence from their vehicles during regular and non-business hours. The drop box is not exclusive to payments. The estimated cost of that was $3,000.
Any questions or comments? Yes. Chair recognizes Ms. Arena.
Barbara Arena, 131 Whitman Street. I know the Finance Committee voted not to recommend this, and I know why. Because I used to be there. However, I agree with them on this, that it's $3,000. I understand that the town employees have been asked that this would be a convenience for certain townspeople, but there are alternative methods in terms of electronic. Stamps still work, and $3,000 plus the aggravation that our town employees would have to go through to get to this drop box on a daily basis, not to mention shovel it out or plow around it for a good couple of months out of the year, just seems to be a little bit of a waste of money, in my opinion. That's just my opinion.
Would anybody like to respond? Mr. Young.
Only from a financial standpoint, and I know that other towns have this particular item in place, and it's not only a convenience, but having a financial background, I know the easier you make the process to pay your bills, the quicker you're going to get your bills. And the quicker you get your bills, the sooner you're going to be able to put that money into action for the town. The other thing is, obviously, it doesn't only include the payment of bills, it would be your annual census forms and all other types of correspondence. You're not only saving your, what is it, postage stamp now, 45 cents, 47 cents, or whatever it is, 48? You'd be saving on mailing charges, you'd be saving the $3 charge that if you want to do it electronically. A lot of people still don't trust the electronic method because of the ability to get, to have your information scammed offline. So a lot of people still don't like to do that. They like to come into the town hall and make their payment. This would avoid them coming into town hall and driving up to a secure box. I believe it's going to be located out in the parking lot, and depositing all that information. So it's not only a savings for you, but the quicker the town, the easier it is to make your payment, the sooner the town's going to get their money.
Any other?
And so, makes perfect sense to me, the $3,000 is a small price to pay for the convenience to the townspeople.
Is there any other comment or questions? Yes, please.
Hi, Lee Gamache, 819 Main Street, and I'm an employee at the town hall, and I recommend this. My office is right beside one of the doors of the town hall, and I can't tell you how many times I've seen elderly people. They don't pay online, but I've seen them come in and just struggle trying to get into the town hall when they could just drive up to this box. Young mothers with children, too, you see them lugging everything out of the car to come in and pay a bill when they could just drop it in a box. So I urge you to vote yes for this. Thanks.
All right. Seeing no other comment, all those in favor of Article 5 signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed, "nay."
Nay.
The ayes have it. Article 5 is adopted. Article 6, Mr. Scott.
Yes, Article 6. I move the town to vote or transfer from free cash to fund an engineering and plan design...
Mr. Scott, sorry to interrupt, but you have to give the figure.
I move that the town will vote to transfer $30,000 from free cash to fund the engineering and plan designs for a new highway building facility.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded. Mr. Scott.
These funds are needed to conduct an overall evaluation and plan and designs to accommodate the needs of the highway department. This is based on information that we provided to the Board of Selectmen from the Building
Any questions or comments on Article 6? Mr. Norton.
John Norton, 31 Indian Path. Mr. Scott wrote a letter to the Hanson Express, which is duplicated here this evening, and...
Could you speak up, sir?
I'm sorry, maybe the...
I'm not sure if the microphone is...
The mic's not on?
Yes, now I can hear you.
You can hear me now?
Yes.
Usually not a problem. Anyway, in Mr. Scott's letter, he quite properly points out that to evaluate this project and to expedite it, the town needs three figures. One, he has in his letter, which would be the cost of updating our present facility. The second, which I think this is taking into account, is what it would cost to rehab the buildings we just accepted, to move the highway department out there. The third figure we need is the cost of cleaning up the existing site. And it seems to me, and to expedite things, we ought to be doing the engineering on those two things together. And I'm questioning whether there's enough money here to do that, because you really can't move till you have those two numbers to compare to the other number. And it's the same kind of engineering, so it doesn't make a lot of sense to pay for two engineering studies when you could just slightly expand the one we're buying.
Mr. Scott.
This request is made based on the information that we have before us, that would incorporate those issues in that study. We haven't gotten any figures as yet to address those issues.
But... Mr. Norton.
In order to expedite this, we'll ultimately need that figure. So why not get it at the same time? The people need to know, obviously, we want to use these buildings, and I expect that that's what will happen, but we need the cost of doing that, which this engineering study will study, plus the cost of what it would cost to do it where it is, which is quite expensive, and add to that the cost of the cleanup. Because otherwise, if the town takes these one bite at a time, suppose hypothetically, this report comes in and gives us a nice figure for maintaining the, for moving, and we approve the move, and then the cleanup costs come in at $6 million or something. I'm just being hypothetical. We need that third number. So to expedite this whole project, why don't we just expand this engineering to include the cleanup of the existing site and the cost to renovate the new buildings?
Mr. Howard?
Yeah, I believe the cleanup is completed up there. If I'm not right, Bill?
The cleanup at the existing facility, because we all know we've been operating outside of EPA guidelines for several years.
The cleanup, I said, was done already up at the new site, up on Hawks Avenue.
That I'm aware of.
Mr. Norton. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 6... Mr. Amico.
Steve Amico, 95 Stevens Street. Has there been a traffic study as well done for the people who live on Reeds, Pleasant, and South? Because there's going to be quite a bit of traffic going down those streets, especially if this is all approved.
Well, actually, and with that, I'm going to caution this. I don't want this debate to get outside of the scope, and this is, this article is purely to fund an engineering and plan design for the new highway building.
Well, shouldn't we have possession of these buildings before we even start doing a study on it? And shouldn't we study the impact that it's going to be to the residents who live on these streets? Right now, it's on a main street. These are all going to be going down side streets now.
And I'm just saying that getting into other issues, I mean, we could come up with a list of, what, 100 issues dealing with a piece of property. The scope of this article is purely on the engineering. But would somebody like to respond to, Mr. Amico? Mr. Howard?
No, I don't know, Steve, whether or not the traffic would equal or not when light control was down there, but I'm sure that there was plenty of traffic down there when that light control was down there. And I don't think there'll be much more than that.
And again, discussing traffic, when we have an article on a traffic study, then this would make perfect sense. Ms. Kemmett.
Yes, I would like to tack on maybe a little bit of additional money to this, keep the article, we need to do an engineering study clearly, but to take a look independently at the contamination at that site to make sure that the piece of the two acres we're getting has got a clean bill of health. Because what we were told at last town meeting by the engineer from GEI was that they had tested the portion that was going to be going over to wildlife fisher, and fish, but that they had not tested the portion that we were getting. And if we're going to put money into an engineering study, I would hope that we would make sure that we don't have any contamination on the property before we put in more money. So I would just like to amend and tack on, you know, like another $10,000, $15,000 to the article, and I'd be more than glad to write it up to make sure that we're kicking the tires and that we don't have contamination on that property. I just think it's the smart thing to do.
Just as a preliminary matter, I do believe it's within the scope to change the figure here, but I would be worried about adding an amount of money without any basis for it. Mr. Scott.
Basically, those issues have already been addressed. The site that we are getting, the land that we are getting, is considered a clean site at the present time. They have remediated all those. We discussed all of that at the former town meeting before the townspeople voted for that to accept the project. They are still involved in a cleanup of the overall property. The property, regardless of what happens with it, will still be in Hanson when it's all said and done. And in addition to that, just so people are aware of it, there are 50 separate DEP sites in the current town, Hanson, as we speak. The only one that I know of, my understanding, that's being actively cleaned up and remediated is the light control property, which I think is a plus as we move forward. We've also, in our consideration, and it's not before you tonight, considering possibly hiring a licensed by the state of Massachusetts site professional to review everything that's been done so far down there. And I would think that obviously would be the first step in this process, and if they give us any, or raise any red flags or anything of that nature, we certainly would address that, and that may end up in having it not move forward. But if we pass over the money at this time, we're trying to be proactive with this and move this forward as we speak. So that's the reasoning behind it.
I guess that's exactly what I'm saying, is why are we studying the property before we've hired our own professional for the site? It just seems like we're putting, the order of things is not right. We're going to be spending money on a site that we don't have a professional that's told us whether or not it's fine. And I understand what Mr. Scott is saying, but I did re-watch the town meeting from May before today, and what the gentleman from Hubble said, and I wish he was here, but their professional said, was that what they do is they take the, where they think the contamination started, and then they figure out where they think it's spread to, and then that gets them to a certain point. They believe that the property that we're getting gifted is beyond that scope. But he said, he did not stutter, he said, "I cannot tell you that there's no contamination on that site." He said those words, and I'm just saying, if we're going to spend money and we're going to move our guys there and we're trying to do better for Highway, can we please make sure there's no contamination on that property?
If I could, just have the town administrator respond.
One of the issues that's very important to this site is that the town makes sure that the property is clean. The town has not accepted the deed at this point, and unless the town gets a 21E from them, the town is not going to accept it. So that's very important, because if we're going to borrow money to do any renovation to the Highway Barn, the barn company would insist that we have a 21E and that property is clean even before we take it over. So Mr. Scott's recommendation is that once the 21E is done, then we would have a licensed site inspector check to make sure, looking at the 21E and all the reports coming from DEP, that it is clean.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
May I just add one additional, and then I swear that I'll move on. Just, I also, when we're looking at the 21E, could we please pay attention to whether or not it is Hubble that is giving us the 21E or Light Control that's giving us the 21E? Because as you know, it was a stock deal, and Light Control doesn't have a lot of assets, whereas Hubble does. And all of the filings have been done by Light Control to the DEP. And a lot of the letters, in fact, I've got one here, is very specific where they're saying it's GEI on behalf of Light Control, on behalf of Light Control. And there have been court cases, and again, I'm not saying that this is going to happen here, but there have been court cases where people have taken a 21E, they've gone to go open it up and go after the, you know, the person that they thought was responsible, only to find there wasn't anybody there.
Well, and again, that probably will be a debate for another day...
It will, but I...
...once it's germane to the article. If we could move on to Ms. Buzan.
Emery Buzan, 95 Woodbrook Lane. I would like to move to pass over this article. Just until we have the actual deed in our hand, I don't believe that we should be putting $30,000 worth of the town's monies towards a project that we don't even know if we're going to accept the land right now.
Ms. Buzan, are you recommending that people vote against this article, or are you substituting a motion for the motion of Mr. Scott?
I'm substituting a motion that we just pass over.
So the motion, is there a second? The motion that is on the table, or, I'm sorry, the motion currently being discussed is to table this article. Could we have a response, or is there any discussion before we move to a vote on that Mr. Young.
This board is trying to be proactive. This board, the town, the last town meeting voted to take, for the, directed the Board of Selectmen to take possession of this property. And we're trying to do a study here to make sure it's feasible to convert this building into a highway department, how much of that property are we going to need, how much of the building we're going to need. This will be put into an article, and that article will have $30,000 in that article. So when we do take possession of that property, we'll be able to do the study and conduct the study for the feasibility of converting that property and retrofitting it into a new highway department.
To you, Mr. Moderator, don't you think you're putting the cart before the horse?
No.
We don't have the property yet.
No, not at all.
Now, I don't think a motion to pass over is worthy of a long debate. I think we've gotten the issues out. So at this point... So at this point, the motion to pass over has been seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The nays have it, unless someone would like to have a recorded vote. A recorded vote has been asked. Therefore, if we could have the tellers, please take the count. At this time, all those in favor of Ms. Buzan's motion to pass over Article Six, please signify by raising your blue card. Six. Ms. Kement? Fourteen. Mr. Norton? All those opposed to the motion to pass over, please signify by raising your blue card at this time. Thirty-eight. Mr. Weeks?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. Mr. Norton?
Four.
Four. So by a vote of 60 to 44, the motion fails. Now, if, seeing no other discussion on Article Six, we'll move to that vote now. All those in favor of Article Six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. Article Six is adopted. Article Seven, Mr. Mitchell?
I move the town vote to transfer $17,000 from free cash to be added to the appropriation under Article Eight of the May 2012 Special Town Meeting Regarding Firefighters Retirement.
Do we have a second? Seconded, Mr. Mitchell?
These funds are needed to fund sick time and vacation buyback of retiring employees approximately $17,000.
Any questions or comment on Article Seven? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Seven signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article Seven is adopted. Article Eight, Mr. Howard?
I move the town vote to transfer $10,000 from free cash to be added to the Regional Schools Capital Stabilization Fund, as established by the October 2014 Special Town Meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded, Mr. Howard?
The stabilization fund sets aside funds for the exclusive use of paying for capital improvements to the Hanson School Buildings and the Whitman-Hanson Regional High School, estimated at $10,000.
Any questions or comments on Article Eight? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Eight signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article Eight is adopted. Article Nine, Mr. Hayes?
I move the town vote to transfer from free cash $12,100 to reimburse Whitman-Hanson Regional School District to replace the 225-gallon PVI water heater at the Regional High School with a high-efficiency tankless gas unit.
Second.
Seconded, Mr. Hayes?
The current water at Whitman-Hanson, the current water heater at the Whitman-Hanson Regional School was unreliable for delivery of hot water due to equipment failure. The total cost of the project's $29,000, of which 41.71% is Hanson's share, and the estimated cost is $12,100.
Any questions or comments on Article Nine? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Nine signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article Nine is adopted. Article Ten, Mr. Hayes?
I move the town vote to transfer from free cash $79,841.03 to reimburse the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District to complete the repairs at the Hanson Middle School first floor classrooms caused by a clogged waste pipe on April 13, 2015.
Second.
Seconded, Mr. Hayes?
The total cost of the repairs at the Hanson Middle School is estimated at $179,841.03. The insurance limit for clogged waste pipe is capped at $100,000 per occurrence, leaving a balance of $79,841.03.
Any questions or comments on Article Ten? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Ten signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article Ten is adopted. Article Eleven, Mr. McGann?
Mr. Moderator, I motion to pass over Article Eleven.
We have a motion to pass over. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those, any questions or comments? All those in favor of passing over Article Eleven, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article Eleven is passed over. Article Twelve, Chief Thompson?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen. I move the town vote to transfer $20,000 from free cash to the purchase of a new analog digital repeater.
Second.
Seconded, Mr. Tom, or Chief Thompson?
The current repeater for the police department is beginning to fail. This piece of equipment is crucial to the public safety network in our town.
Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Twelve signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article Twelve is adopted. Article Thirteen, Mr. Howard?
I move the town vote to transfer $20,000 from water surplus account to be added to the 1992 Town Meeting Water Emergency Fund.
Actually, first, if you could finish reading the motion, please. Mr. Howard?
Donnie, they can't hear you, Donnie.
Article Fifteen?
No, I'm sorry. You just had to finish saying.
Article Fifteen. I'm sorry.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded, Mr. Howard?
The article is basically to replenish the emergency line, which is used for unexpected expenses, and are not budgeted in our general budget line.
Any questions or comments on Article Thirteen? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Thirteen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Article Thirteen is adopted. Article Fourteen, Mr. Howard?
I move the town vote to transfer $17,000 from water surplus for the water audit survey for the water department's renewal of the Water Management Act.
Seconded, Mr. Howard?
The Department's Water Management Act is renewed every 20 years. This water audit survey is part of the process. In our renewal process, DEP is required that the water departments keep their unaccounted for water under 10% of their total water withdrawn for the total, for the year.
Any questions or comments on Article Fourteen? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Fourteen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article Fourteen is adopted. Article Fifteen, Mr. Howard?
I move the town vote to transfer from water surplus $15,000 to purchase a new SCADA computer and the software for the office.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded, Mr. Howard?
This computer, this computer is an upgrade for the SCADA Supervisory Control and Data Question System. It allows the water department operators full access, control, and monitoring of the pump stations, chemical building, and water tank from the office. They can also view the status of the distribution system 24 hours a day remotely from the laptops, and monitor and answer all alarms that come in on the SCADA.
Any questions or comments on Article Fifteen? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Fifteen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article Fifteen is adopted. Article Sixteen, Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town raise and appropriate a sum of $74,711, and to borrow $95,000 to purchase and equip one front-end loader for the Highway Department, and that the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow $95,000 under Massachusetts' General Law, Chapter 44, or any other enabling authority to do authorize the Board of Selectmen to take all actions necessary to carry out this project, in behalf of the name of the town.
Second.
Seconded, Mr. Brown?
This loader is, just started 11 years old. Usually, we've usually replaced them after 10 years. That's usually about the best we can get out of a front-end loader before we start having major breakdowns. The loader right now has a leaky rear main seal, which is very expensive to repair. It's in need of tires all the way around, which is between $8,000 and $9,000, and has become unreliable. Last winter, in the middle of winter, we had the radiator let go. So we're falling one year behind, but, so this is why I'm here this year.
Are there any questions or comments on Article Sixteen? Mr. Hayes?
Bob Hayes, 80 Green Grove. Bob, through you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you.
Bob, it says the estimated cost is $169,711, correct?
I'm sorry, I must not have heard you. I'm sorry.
Is there a trade-in value to the Volvo?
$45,000.
Is there a question that I can?
Is there a trade-in value on the 05 loader, the Volvo, through you, Mr. Moderator, to Mr. Brown?
And, Mr. Brown, could you respond?
It was $45,000 for a trade-in.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Art, oh, I'm sorry, this, because there is a borrowing aspect to this article, I'll just make this announcement and then go to you, Mr. Norton. There's a borrowing aspect to this, and therefore it requires a two-thirds vote. Mr. Norton?
Because this was on the capital improvement matrix, we actually have taken some votes and had some conversation about this, and I thought I'd weigh in with what the committee thought. First of all, we recognize the need for a new piece of equipment. We did not have sufficient funds to make the outright purchase with the last year's capital allocation. We would have given it attention this coming year. Since I saw it on the article, we had some discussion at the committee and we voted. The committee voted unanimously to recommend if it was done as an outright purchase. But the committee voted unanimously not to recommend if it was done with borrowing and a trade-in. And there's two reasons for this. One, we don't like to see borrowing on a piece of equipment, because it just adds interest to the cost. Secondly, when you trade your piece of equipment in, which is necessary to make these numbers work, the dealer who gets it intends to sell that for a profit, obviously. That's not an altruistic move. The ordinary way for a town to acquire something like this is to buy the piece of equipment outright, make the item the surplus, and then auction off the surplus item. So you'll not only get more for the front-end loader than you will get in the trade-in, but you will also save all of the interest. So I really, we had a million-some dollars of free cash. I'd really like to see this be an outright purchase, not put borrowing, and I'm concerned, I don't know whether this borrowing is intended to come from future capital budgets, or whether there's another means. I'm not certain what Chapter 44, Section 7 says.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in, oh. Ms. Buzan?
Emery Buzan, 95 Woodbrook Lane. I'm just trying to do the math. If we have a $45,000 trade-in, and we're, we're getting $74,711 out of raise and appropriate, and $95,000 out of borrowing, that adds up more to $169,711. I don't get the math.
If we could have the town administrator please speak to that.
The trade-in is $40,000.
Yeah, the, the trade-in is $40,000, and then the total state contract price delivered is $169,711, and no sense. So that's been factored into the math.
I guess, I guess I'm just still.
And this is the first time I'm looking at the contract, so if somebody else would like to talk about this, please. Mr. Hayes?
Oh, close. So.
It appears to me that the $209,711, and deduct the $40,000, that's what I was getting at. So the difference in the trade, between the trade and the retail, the wholesale price, the town bid list price, and the original price, is $209,711, is that right, Mr.?
Yes, correct.
And you deduct $40,000, so the, the estimated trade difference.
Okay.
Is $169,711. That's what I was.
Thank you, thanks, Bob. Any other questions or comments? All right, at this time, we'll take a vote on Article Sixteen. All those in favor of Article Sixteen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. Article Sixteen is adopted by a two-thirds vote. She has no trust in me. Article Seventeen, Mr. Brown?
I move the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of $45,000 to purchase and equip one F-150 pickup truck for the Highway Department.
Second.
Seconded, Mr. Brown?
This truck will replace the current 2007 truck that is used by myself, the highways of air. Mileage now is 107,000. It's become expensive to maintain, and has basically become rotting out from the inside out, so.
Any other questions or comments? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Brown, when you made your motion, did you say free cash? Oh, raise and appropriate. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, Joe Campbell, 150 Woodbine Ave. So, Mr. Brown just annotated what the actual maintenance is that they're requiring or requesting to repair, and that is rotting out from the inside, is that correct? Rotting out from the inside, okay. I would also, I would like to hear from the CIC, so the chair for the CIC got up and spoke about the loader. Could I also hear from the chair in regards to his comments from the CIC, whether they voted to recommend or prioritize this, this article?
Mr. Norton?
Actually, due to the replacement date, this doesn't qualify for capital funds, because the first qualification is an amount of money, which has been changed from 25,000 to 35,000, which this would qualify. But the other is that the asset has to have a life expectancy of 10 years. And judging that this is only eight years old, I'm guessing that we're not going to get any pickup trucks running 10 years for this Highway Department.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, through you, I would like to move to amend the motion, and I would like for Article Sixteen to read, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, or transfer a sum of money from free cash or available funding source to purchase and equip an F-150 pickup truck for the Highway Department, and to place the existing vehicle as surplus or trade-in toward the new purchase with consideration of which choice would bring more revenue to the town. The article currently, as it's written, has a beginning, a middle, but there's no end in regards to what's going to happen to the existing vehicle.
Mr. Brown?
The end to that story would be that that pickup truck would be going, being put in reserve for the police department to use, which would retire their black bread truck from carrying around barricades and towing trailers, with the understanding that it's used minimally, that it will not last if it's used every week.
All right. And actually, let me speak to Mr. Campbell's motion, too. Mr. Campbell was nice enough to put his motion into writing and to give it to me before the town meeting. Kudos to you. I have spoken to the town council about this, and I, and I'm going to rule that the amendment is out of the scope of the town meeting for a couple of reasons. First of all, there was no real notice that this was going to happen, and therefore, you know, people weren't put on, on call to come to the town meeting and talk about the, giving the truck somewhere else. The other reason is, is that, under state law, this is really the province of the Board of Selectmen. So the, the natural progression would be, we, once this is redirected, it's up to the selectmen to decide what to do with the, with the outdated truck. So I'm sure that'll come up at a future selectmen's meeting, and I'm sure the selectmen would love to talk to you about it. But I'm going to rule this out of the scope for the purposes of tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions about Article Seventeen? Ms. Buzan?
Can I just make a comment that the Board of Health and the conservation and planning have been looking for vehicles? They drive through septic and conservation land, and they've been looking for a vehicle for quite some time, and always been told, "We don't have one, we don't have one." I'd just like to ask the Board of Selectmen if they would consider giving this truck to one of those departments, or for all of them to share at this time. Thanks.
Well, thank you, that—I'm sure the Selectmen have taken note.
Thank you.
Ms. King.
Ms. King, eighty-seven Glenwood Place. Off of what Ms. Buzan just had to say, if I'm not mistaken, when I drive past Town Hall, isn't there two town of Hanson vehicles in the parking lot for the use of Town Hall employees? To whomever can answer that?
Would anybody like to answer that?
We currently had one Crown Victoire, Victoria, Victoria, whatever they're called, from the Crown Vic, thank you, from the police department, and most recently, there's been a Dodge Charger, police cruiser, that has also been turned over, so there is two vehicles available at the Town Hall for use.
And a second question, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, ma'am.
Through you to Mr. Brown. I'd like to know if, as the highway supervisor, if he puts a plow on the vehicle, if you're out with the guys, and how much wear and tear his vehicle gets on a daily basis.
Well, that seems like it's outside of the scope of this question. You're asking about his personal vehicle?
No, the vehicle that he drives for the town.
All right, Mr. Brown.
No, plow does not go on my truck or the supervisor's truck, because what happens is, you end up plowing instead of supervising. That's for a reason, so.
Any questions or comments remaining?
No, thank you, but I'd urge folks to vote for this, and to give the vehicle to the police department, because Town Hall, in fact, has two vehicles that they can use. They don't need a third. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of Article seventeen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, Article seventeen is adopted. Article eighteen, Mr. McGann.
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over.
Oh, could you speak into the microphone, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over Article eighteen.
Do we have a second on that motion?
There was a second.
Oh, there was a second, thank you. All those in favor of passing over Article eighteen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article eighteen is passed over. Article nineteen, Chief Thompson.
I move the—I move the town vote to transfer twenty-eight thousand dollars from the ambulance account to purchase two Lucas II chest compression systems for our ambulances.
Second.
Seconded, Chief Thompson.
This transfer is requested to equip both the ambulances with a Lucas II chest compression system. The system provides quality compressions during CPR while freeing up paramedics to focus on other lifesaving tasks.
Any questions or comments on Article nineteen? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article nineteen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article nineteen is adopted. Article twenty, Chief Thompson.
I move the town vote to transfer nine thousand dollars from free cash to replace the hot water furnace at the Main Street Fire Station.
Do we have a second? Seconded, Chief Thompson.
This transfer is requested to have the hot water furnace at the Main Street Fire Station replaced. The existing furnace is over thirty years old.
Any questions or comments on Article twenty?
Patty Norton, thirty-one Indian Path. You're talking about the one down on Route twenty-seven? Okay.
That's correct.
I threw you, Mr. Moderator, to Mr. Thompson. Is that place—is somebody living there? Do you use it?
Chief Thompson.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the speaker. Yes, we do use that station for training, and we do have equipment in there, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article twenty signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article twenty is adopted. Article twenty-one, Chief Thompson.
I move the town vote to transfer twenty thousand dollars from free cash for the construction to reconfigure the interior of the Liberty Street Fire Station.
Second.
Seconded, Chief Thompson.
Fire Station was built in nineteen-seventy-eight as a senior center fire station. There has been only minor modifications over the years. These funds will allow us to reconfigure areas to address the operational needs of our department. This article was presented last year and passed over to provide funding for the fireline installations at Hanson Middle and Indian Head School.
Any questions or comments on Article twenty-one? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article twenty-one signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, Article twenty-one is adopted. Article twenty-two, Chief Thompson.
I move the town vote to raise and appropriate thirty thousand dollars to Article eight of the October seventh, two thousand and thirteen special town meeting, fire station septic repair.
Second.
Seconded, Chief Thompson.
These funds, along with the remaining funds in the article, will be utilized to finally install the septic system, as well as bring our existing floor drains into compliance.
Any questions or comments on Article twenty-two? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article twenty-two signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article twenty-two is adopted. Thank you. Article twenty-three, Mr. Mitchell.
I move the town vote to amend Article two-dash-twelve clarification and compensation, Section eleven-C, part-time positions by adding the following positions, by adding the positions as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Seconded, Mr. Mitchell.
This is a housekeeping amendment. The three positions were inadvertently left off the matrix at the May two thousand and fifteen special town meeting, when the plan was updated. So we're not adding any positions, we're just adding, these were left off the matrix when we redid that in May.
Ms. Buzan.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, to Mary Marini. Did we get an answer from the health, assistant health agent?
Could the town administrator please speak to that?
I just got the job description last week, and we will be updating it with the Board of Health.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments on Article twenty-three? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article twenty-three please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article twenty-three is adopted. Article twenty-four, Mr. Young.
Article twenty-four is, I move that the town will vote to lease for a term not more than twenty years, a certain radio tower located at High Street, on terms and conditions as the Selectmen see fit, and to authorize the Selectmen to take any and all actions necessary for such lease.
Second.
Seconded, Mr. Young.
Explanation. The Board of Selectmen has received an inquiry to lease the radio tower located at the former Plymouth County Hospital. If approved, a request for proposal will be advertised for said lease. I just want to point out that this is—this radio tower was deactivated about twenty years ago. I believe it used to be used for the BCI, and also for police and fire networks. It was deactivated when the Plymouth County—Plymouth County Hospital moved off the site at some point. And this—these particular groups are interested in reactivating the tower. They will pay—they offer—the—they will pay under the lease if they are awarded the lease, because this has to go out to an RFP, okay? And anyone will be able to come in and make a proposal on that RFP for a state law, because it's town property under a lease. And the proposal that they made, which I'm certain we will include in any RFP or any subsequent lease, will call for that property. Any repairs or maintenance to bring that tower into reactivation use will be paid for by the tenant. They will also take care of any liability cost to the town, and they will hold the town harmless, of course. It's basically one of these boilerplate leases that are put forward that protects the town for any and all possible occurrence, and gives that to the tenant. So, I mean, the—this basic lease may not necessarily go to the people that made the proposal, it's who—it'll go to whoever submits the best proposal under the request for proposals, and the Board of Selectmen will examine those RFPs and make a decision that they feel is in the best interest of the town, to lease that property, and finally reactivate it. The proposal that we receive from—the proposal that we received was from the Whitman Amateur Radio Club and the Hanson Emergency Communications Group, and it would also provide backup emergency communications for the area, for the town and for area citizens. So, we didn't see any downside to it, but it's a lease, and in order to get a lease approved, we've got to come before town meeting, and this will also require a two-thirds vote since we are leasing town property.
Thank you, you stole my line. Yes, ma'am.
Faith Gernhardt, sixty-six Bonnie Hill Lane. Will the lease include the requirement that the power needs of the tower will come from the leasing, not from the town, because there's no power going to that site now?
Mr. Young?
Absolutely, the—any—any cost of reinstituting power to that site, be it electricity or anything else, the cost of running the lines, the cost of reactivating that site, and the power cost will all be borne by the tenant.
Mr. Waschke.
Would this lease require, give the town a thirty-day out under any condition?
Mr. Young?
Did you say a thirty-day out?
Yes, standard boilerplate lease.
Yeah, we will—we will certainly—I don't know if it'll be thirty days, I mean, where are you getting the thirty days from? Is that legal jargon, or is it? We will—we will include an out basically for the town, and I should tell you that in this lease, because it's located on the Plymouth County Hospital site, if this town determines at some future date in the future, that that particular parcel on which the radio tower sits, is—the use of that property has a more preferred, has a more—a better preferred use that the town chooses, other than a radio tower, then we will include a provision in that lease, so that the lease can be—the lease can be terminated, and instead, the preferred use will go into effect.
Thank you. Mr. Sutter.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. I understand that this is governed entirely by the Act thirty-B, which designates all real estate transactions of town property that either be leased or sold. Because of that, I would like to ask the Selectmen what any—and all actions necessary to facilitate such a lease are.
Mr. Young?
Could you repeat that, please?
This is governed by thirty-B. Do you anticipate that there are other actions that you will need to take in order to facilitate such a lease? In other words, what I'm saying is—
Are you just asking me about the RFP that I just explained?
I'm asking you, why is that language in here? Because it's governed by thirty-B, and you—there aren't any other actions to take.
I believe, and I've just spoken to town council, that the actions that would need to be taken would be to declare it surplus and then put out an RFP.
Ah, good. I wish it had said that, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sutter.
Any other questions or comments on Article twenty-four? Mr. Waschke.
I'm just curious, the type of revenue, if any, we're expected to receive, and also, is there any—are they going to be on the town insurance at all? Like, God forbid, the thing ever fell, who's liable at that point? Are they going to be on the town's insurance, or will they have their own to cover that?
Mr. Young?
I'm assuming, since this is a town-owned tower, that it must be covered under—it's a town-owned structure. The structure itself must be covered under the—under the town's insurance policy if the tower fell over. I mean, I'm just assuming that.
If we could please—be no objection, we'll hear from the town council on that
We do have our own insurance, but as a component of a lease, we would require that they have insurance, full release indemnification. We're not going to take on any responsibility or liability associated with the lease of such, especially this kind of piece of equipment.
Mr. Weeks.
Hi, Joe Weeks, eighty-three Hancock Street. I'm just curious, I think Chairman Young alluded to it a little bit, but it says you can lease for not more than twenty years. What happens if I decide to lease it for ten years, and then we decide to develop Plymouth County Hospital, and that site's kind of right smack dab in what we want to do?
Mr. Young?
I think I just answered that. We will—we will include a provision in the lease, so that if that—if that site becomes a preferred site for some other use, dealing with the development of the Plymouth County Hospital, be it a park, developing small industry or business up there, then we will have a—we will have an out in that lease to provide for that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on Article twenty-four? Yes, sir.
Steve Sol, Katie did. Can I have an answer to his question? The man—he asked about revenue.
Oh, my question. Oh, I thought you had a question for me. Yes. Bruce, sorry, it was the question I asked before. Do we expect any revenue from this?
Mr. Young?
I'll know better—we'll know better when the RFPs come in. We could very well receive an RFP that would provide some revenue for the town. You'd never know what you're going to get until you put the RFPs out.
Would we enter into a lease where there'd be no income?
Mr. Waschke.
Would we enter into a lease where there'd be no income?
Mr. Young?
We have—we have several leases up there now that we—the provide—that we don't have any income for, one being the food pantry. The proposal was put forward by—by—by basically the Whitman-Hanson Radio Club and the Hanson Emergency Communication Group, and it didn't—it didn't include any—any monetary value in it, but we saw no downside on that particular proposal. But we're not sure at this point what RFP we're going to approve, and what kind of RFPs we're going to get once we put that proposal out, and we very, very well could get a RFP in that does provide revenue for the town. That's a fact.
Ms. Buzan.
Emery Buzan, ninety-five Wood Brook Lane. So, is it costing the town any money to make—put a lease together and put RFPs out?
Mr. Young?
Only to put a standard RFP out there, which I'm sure there's some boilerplate ones out there for leases like this, in which, you know, we will include our own verbiage for, and run it by town council in order to prepare the RFP and advertise it. So I'm sure we're going to have probably some advertising costs for the RFP, and for the attorney to look at it and approve it according to form, but just like any other any other lease that we've taken—with—taken up in the past, such as the lease for the twenty-four—twenty-seven-hundred square feet behind the fire station, the lease—the lease for the food pantry up at the Plymouth County Hospital, there's basic costs that go into that, sure.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of Article twenty-four please signify by saying—yes, sir.
John Barata from Meadow Lane. During the lease, can someone lease the tower and then decide to take it down, or add to it? That's a fair question in a lease, if they lease the agreement.
What was the question again?
Can they modify the structure, or remove the structure once they lease it, and put something on its place?
Mr. Young?
No, they wouldn't be required. They can—they could modify the structure, but only under—the only under the guidelines provided in the use. The modification will be—the whatever modifications they can make will be decided within the lease, okay? They can't—they can't take the tower down.
So, it's not really a boiler—it's not really a boilerplate lease, then? I mean, there's going to have to be specifics in this lease. I guess my point is, before—
There are—there are specifics.
Hold on.
Correct, my question—I just want to clarify, this lease will not actually be a boilerplate, just a simple template. We're actually going to have to add a number of stipulations onto this lease as a town, is what I'm actually hearing. Initially, it was a boilerplate, and I think that was wrong.
And I'll step in here, and I think town council answered that question in that he would be—he and his firm would be taking a look at any lease before it's signed by the town. So, any lease may or may not have a percentage of boilerplate language, but it will be all looked at.
I mean, every lease, as he says, has a percentage of boilerplate language in it, and then you add a detract from that, depending on what you're leasing and what you want your protection to be.
Correct, I guess I'm just trying to figure out, as a town, as a citizen, what are we going to be adding and subtracting from this lease? It just seems very open-ended right now.
It is open-ended, if I may, it is open-ended because there haven't been any requests put in formally with the Selectmen. This is simply to declare it surplus so that they can start that process.
And to request, and have RFPs be sent in.
Right. Right.
Okay. I guess the last question, if we have someone that is willing to pay for a lease, are they going to be considered any more than someone who is just looking to lease it for use? It's just a fair question, just a question I'm having. If someone, if an RFP comes in, wants to bring in revenue, will the board of selectmen consider that at a higher priority versus someone that will not?
And again, I think that's a bit out of the scope of this. I mean, that's a question for the selectmen and it'll be debated at their meetings.
Okay. Thank you.
But outside of the scope. Any other questions or comments? Mr. McLeod?
Mike McLeod, 27 Highland Terrace. Ladies and gentlemen, it seems pretty clear-cut. We have an unused tower. We're going to lease it with the provision that if we need it, we take it back. So, with that, I say we move to the vote, please.
Thank you. So, all those in favor of Article 24 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. Article 24 is... Oh, I'm sorry. Article 24 is adopted by a two-thirds vote. Article 25, Mr. Scott. Okay, we have someone who doubts the judgment of the chair. Therefore, if we could have... All those in favor of Article 24, please signify by raising your blue card at this time.
In favor?
In favor of Article 24, please raise your blue card. I'm sorry, you're having much too much fun back there. Thank you. Mr. Weeks?
20.
20. Ms. Kemet?
38.
38. Mr. Norton?
10.
10. All those opposed to Article 24, please signify by raising your blue cards at this time. Ms. Kemet?
3.
3. Mr. Weeks?
5.
5. Mr. Norton?
18.
So, by a vote of 68 to 26, Article 24 passes by the required two-thirds vote. Article 25, Mr. Scott.
I move that the town vote to amend the Hanson general bylaws, Article 2...
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Scott, one moment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, they just didn't vote.
Yeah, those are the people who chose to vote. I, for instance, didn't vote. And some people may have stayed silent. I've already declared it done by two-thirds vote. So, Article 25, Mr. Scott.
I move the town vote to amend the Hanson general bylaws, Article 2-2, Board of Selectmen by adding a new Section 10 as printed in the warrant. A selectman may not hold...
One moment, Mr. Scott. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded. Mr. Scott.
A selectman may not hold any compensatory office or employment in Hanson Town Government during the term for which he or she is elected, nor hold any compensated appointive town office or employment for one year thereafter. Also, any member of the Board of Selectmen serving in such capacity at the time of the adoption of this section shall not be required to resign from any other position held and shall be allowed to complete his or her term of office. This bylaw shall apply for all town compensated positions where the appointment or removal is recommended to the relevant board, committee, commission, department head by the town administrator under the Chapter 41 of the Acts of 2006, also known as Hanson Town Administrator Act. Also, any and all compensated offices or positions of employment in Hanson Town Government that are directly appointed by the Hanson Board of Selectmen under mass state law.
And I believe that's the motion. So, do we have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded. Mr. Scott?
An explanation. It is the opinion of the Board of Selectmen that there is an incompatibility between selectmen and any other government office within the town of Hanson. It does not make sense that a person may simultaneously serve as a town selectman and a compensated town employee who would report either directly or indirectly to the Board of Selectmen. The rationale of this opinion is that incompatibility arises when a person holding two positions cannot perform the duties of each. In the situation of a town employee and a selectman, it is obvious that the selectman would have power over the employees in the areas of hiring, firing, and determining compensation. And as such, these two offices are incompatible.
All right. Before I recognize the next speaker, we covered 24 articles in an hour and 20 minutes or so. I don't want to take... I understand from some of the apparel out in the audience that there will be a debate on this article. On the other hand, I don't want to equal 24 articles worth of work to discuss this one. So, to the extent that we can keep the arguments clear and not repetitious, I would greatly appreciate it. Ms. Bouzanne?
Emery Bouzanne, 95 Woodbrook Lane, former selectwoman challenger. I did, in fact, when I was running for the Board of Selectmen, contact the State Ethics Commission, had a thorough, probably 45-minute conversation with a woman from the State Ethics Commission. I informed her of my duties and my role as a town employee, as an administrative assistant to the building commissioner, as an employee under Ron Sanangelo, as a union steward. I told her everything about my position as employee. I received, you know, information back from her verbally. She sent me an email. I'm not going to read you the entire email, but I will read you what she referenced in her email to correspond to this article. It says, "If elected, then in your role as selectman, you may not participate in any particular matter in which you have personal financial interests, such as negotiating the collective bargaining agreement for your position or decisions about benefits that affect you. You asked whether you could participate in collective bargaining negotiations as a steward for the union that covers clerical employees. You stated that the collective bargaining agreement provides for union stewards participating in such negotiations. I advised you that you would not be prohibited from participating in such negotiations as a union steward. The restriction would only be on participating in your role as selectman." She goes on, and I don't have the other part of it, but she does go on to tell me that I could participate in everyone but my immediate supervisor's pay and contract and my paying contract. I could negotiate the town administrator's contract because he is not my direct supervisor. And I could act currently, if you take tonight's articles, I could have voted on every single article in the warrant as printed. So, I asked the Board of Selectmen, where would it be ethically and why couldn't someone that's working for the town run as a selectwoman for this town? Thank you.
Mr. Edgell?
Rich Edgell, 115 South Street. You had mentioned that we've gone completely through this night nice and smooth. Could we take a quick vote on this? Doesn't it take two-thirds vote to beat this?
It does not. It takes a majority vote.
A majority vote?
Yes.
All right.
And to the former point, I don't want to go on too, too long.
No, I don't either.
But, on the other hand, I think a few perspectives is fine to get that out. Mr. Young?
Just one comment to Ms. Bouzanne. When you were talking to the representative from the Ethics Commission, and you mentioned the fact that you were the union steward for the clerical union, right? And you told them that you had the authority to negotiate those contracts for the clerical union, on behalf of the clerical union. Did you also inform the representative from the Ethics Commission that sitting across from you directly, okay, would be the town administrator, who also happens to be the lead negotiator on all union contracts? And that that particular individual, since you were a selectman, would be reporting directly to you and that you would be one of his supervisors? Did you also say that to the representative of the Ethics Commission, just to clarify that?
And here, I've allowed the horse to get out of the barn a bit here. If we could avoid talking about the specific incident that may have given rise to this...
Well, she made that statement.
Well, she did make that statement. She brought up the opinion of the State Ethics Board. I just prefer to talk about this article on its own without getting into a rehashing of the position. Ms. Bouzanne, if you could respond.
Okay, so I did find the second half of that email. I won't go into a huge detail of it, but it says... Says... Sorry, I just, I had it highlighted. Okay, so, as a note, I assumed that as an administrative assistant to the building commissioner, you are under the direct supervision of the building commissioner, which I am. I also assume that the town administrator has administrative oversight over all town departments under the Board of Selectmen, but is not your direct supervisor. It's correct. Therefore, provided those assumptions are correct, under the precedents just noted, you are prohibited under Section 19 from participating in the town administrator's contract review and negotiations if, and only if, there are pending matters in which you have a financial interest in that the town administrator has direct, immediate power to decide or to participate in deciding. Absent from ongoing negotiations or other live issues involving your financial interest over which he has a decisional power, you are not required by Section 19 to abstain from participating in his contract review or negotiations.
All right.
I didn't hear.
So, again, I'm just asking.
Yeah, I didn't hear what my question was. Answer didn't...
Please, let's not engage in a discussion.
Could we hear from Ms. Kemet?
Yes, through you, Mr. Moderator, to town council. There are existing laws on the books in the state of Massachusetts that are very, very clear about conflict of interest, where if you are going to be perceived as having a conflict of interest, you either need to recuse yourself if you feel as though you can't act impartially, or you need to file a disclosure. And I'm wondering, is this necessary? Do you think this is redundant? And is this something that you think you would recommend the town adopt?
Call upon the town council.
And I'm really going to stay out of this. So, there are parts of this bylaw that have redundancies in them. There are some things in this bylaw that are already prohibited. Some of them are already referenced in that email. So, some of that ground is covered. There are other relationships in this proposed bylaw that are not covered by the ethics law, but really just follow the practice of many communities, which really hold the office of the Board of Selectmen as something that shouldn't co-mingle with any other office in the town. So, it's not atypical for towns to do that. It's not altogether universal either. But, your point is well-taken that there are some things here that already exist. In addition to some of the items that are prohibited that were just referenced, if there was, say, a selectman who wanted to be a plow truck driver and have a contract with the town, that is already prohibited to have that kind of contract going forward. So, there are some things that are already problematic. So, this covers some of them, but not all of them. An independent plow truck, not an official employee of the... There are contracts that are already prohibited. So, this covers some of the ground, but not all of the ground. The purpose, as I understand it, is twofold, to cover some of the things that are already covered and be redundant and drive that point home, as well as to create more of a sense of independence by this board that is not going to co-mingle with any other department or function of the town.
Okay, thank you. And just a question. The way it's written, I think I understand who it's intended to, you know, I guess, encompass. But, the way it's written, where there are capitalized terms that I can't really find referring, you know, like town compensated, and I don't know where these things are referring back to, but when I look at it, it seems as though it's a lot more wide-reaching than, you know, than I would have thought based upon the description. For instance, so can you give me a rundown? If I was a Whitman-Hanson Regional School District employee, does this cover me? Because technically, as a Whitman-Hanson Regional School District employee, I am an employee of both Whitman and Hanson. So, I would be a town compensated employee. But since I don't know what you're referring back to, or whoever it is that wrote this, I don't know what it's referring back to. I'm trying to figure out, you know, is... Can we get a list of who this impacts?
Mr. McCann?
This question was brought up at town, at one of our meetings, and the answer was no. The answer was no. Sorry, my throat's sore. The answer was no, that they're not included in this article.
Okay. And does town council agree that this article could not be interpreted to apply to school district employees?
I don't believe, and I'd have to look closer at the regional school agreement and the way things are done, that the fact that some municipal funds are used in the compensation of regional school district employees, I think generally, and I would defer even to Labor Council for the town, generally, those are going to be compensated by the district themselves.
Okay. But when I've asked about conflict of interest things, I've been told that a town employee is considered a municipal employee, a district employee, rather, is considered a municipal employee of both of the towns of the district, when it's a regional school district.
I'd have to look at the context of that. I can't sit here and guess what that question was or how they run that. I don't take that view necessarily, but it depends on the formation of the district as well. It's not a one-size-fits-all answer I can give to that.
Okay, thank you.
And if we could hear from Ms. King?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to hear from town council about a town compensated employee entering into executive session for union bargaining and the fact that the person being paid for by the town, no matter the position, whether it's an administrative assistant, the town clerk, or whomever, sitting on the board, who has to look at the complaints that come in from the citizens. And if town council really feels that they'd be able to be biased, with all due respect, and I appreciate the support all employees have for each other, but that doesn't look biased to me.
Town council?
Well, you covered a fair amount of ground there. And I think the Ethics Commission opinion is correct. It has to touch you personally to be conflicted. I will state that if you are conflicted, because if, for example, the biggest case that's come out to date from the Ethics Commission is one involving a police officer, this comes out of the town of Carver, there's also one out of the town of Kingston, similar issue, where a police officer became a member of the Board of Selectmen. So, pretty much anything touching negotiations with that union, as well as touching anything that may affect that employment relationship, including negotiating the town administrator contract and other sort of things, that police officer could not participate as a member of the Board of Selectmen. If they can't participate in that matter, they can also be in executive session, too. You're barred. If you're conflicted, you're out. You can't participate, take place in it, you can't be at the table, you've got to go sit in the audience. All those things are applying in that situation. But, the question in other respects is kind of too broad without specific context for me to give you a one, again, a one-size-fits-all opinion.
Mr. Norton?
Actually, Mr. O'Sullivan was there before me, but all right.
Would you like to defer to Mr. O'Sullivan?
Yes, I'll defer to you.
Oh, Mr. O'Sullivan, please.
Thank you. This is the deferred, Mr. O'Sullivan, 625 West Washington Street. There are a lot of incredibly good town and municipal employees that I trust. I would love to have their experience in an administrative fashion, either in a variety of different offices in this town. I think this motion limits participation by some very competent people with years and years of experience in how this town runs, so I would encourage you to vote against this. Thank you.
And Mr. Norton, please.
I'm going to reinforce what Mr. O'Sullivan just said by commenting that there are... I'm going to reinforce what Mr. O'Sullivan just said by commenting that there are over 7,000 registered voters in this town, and we got 114 here at a meeting where we needed 100. And that's because the Patriots aren't playing a Monday night game, and the Red Sox aren't in the playoffs. Because in those instances before, we have had trouble with a quorum. Anything—in the 30 years I've lived here, I can count on my fingers the number of contested selectman races. There's usually one name on the ballot, take it or leave it. And the participation in those votes is very, very slight. I worked the polls. Anything that diminishes people wanting to get involved in town government is a mistake. There is no reason—we have the strongest state ethics in the country, and a ton of conflict of interest laws that I've run into, even in a non-compensated position. It's just redundant, it's silly, and it just—it seems to be aimed at a couple of particular people.
Mr. McGann.
As a result of that issue with the town of Carver, they came up with their own item. A selectman may not hold any other elective or compensated office under government of the town of Carver during the term for which he or she is elected, nor any compensative appointed town office or employment for one year thereafter. Also, that any member of the Board of Selectmen serving in such capacity, at the time of the adoption of this section, shall not be required to resign from any other position held, and shall be allowed to complete his or her term. It's not that we're saying that people—there are a lot of good people in our town. There are a lot of good people in our town. But, all it takes is one person, or two, or a couple, to do the wrong thing, to really throw things in the wrong—wrong way for us, for this town. Okay? I'm not saying, in Emery's case, that's the case. I—I'm sure you'll make an excellent select woman. I truly do. But, all it takes is one, and we've had our history, over time, of—of—people in the wrong place. So, instead, we chose to be proactive, as opposed to being reactive.
And I'd like to wrap this up. So, sir, if you could please state your name, and—
Tom Dahlberg, 66 Hellcraft Road. I think—I'd just like to remind everyone that we're from the same human race as those people in Kingston and Carver. We run under the same laws, rules, and regulations. We don't need problems in Hanson. In the 40 years I've lived here, we've had more than our fair share of problems, and to resolve at town meeting. Tonight, we have an opportunity to keep a problem from happening. It isn't one that might happen, given the history of the human race. It's a problem that will happen if we don't pass this article. It's just a matter of when. So, I would urge you to vote yes on this article, and for once, go away from town meeting, saying, "We kept a problem from happening tonight." Thank you.
Mr. Hayes.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, to Town Council. Out of the 351 communities in Massachusetts, do you have any idea the number of communities that have this type of a bylaw? Was there any research done on it? Because I—I can tell you, there are 351 communities.
But, it would be really impressive if I did have that number off the top of my head. I could tell you that. I—I don't. And—and what I can tell you is that there are varying versions of what's before you here tonight. I'm not advocating for or against it, but there's all kinds of different versions of these types of bylaws that limit participation in other boards or holding other positions. This one, I've seen a few times, is very similar. There's a number of other ones that limit selectman participation in certain other positions, but I can—I can't pinpoint you. What I can tell you, it's not uncommon to go beyond—for municipalities, to go beyond the conflict of interest laws and place limits on whether people can hold two elected positions, or an elected and—and an appointed, or—if you're on the FinCom, you can't do anything else. There are a number of things like that that exist throughout the Commonwealth in more than a majority of towns, in—in my experience representing towns. But, I can't tell you how much this exact one—a few, at least, in various shades of gray.
Thank you. Ms. King, you've already spoken. Do you have something new?
I—yes. I—through you, Ms. Moon, I'd like to address town meeting, to remind them that if an executive session, that the one member has to be barred if they're a municipality compensated employee, that there's a great possibility, with only four selectmen in executive session, that there will be a tie vote. We need that fifth person to have a true democracy, and I urge you to vote no for that reason. Thank you.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes, Ms. Moderator, through you to the board.
Oh, yes. Sorry.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, through you to the board, Joe Campbell, 150 Woodbine Ave. Would the board reconsider and instead amend their article so that it states that at no time more than one chair of the selectman—uh, selectman board be town-employed? So, that way, it comes to a middle ground with what the debate is. Instead of a yes or a no, it comes to a middle ground, and it limits town employees to one chair of the board, therefore not being more powerful. I'm sorry, one seat. One seat of the board.
Mr. McGann.
Joe, thank you for your—Joe, thank you for what you have to say. There are some towns—I stopped counting it, I think six is what I caught—it was what I came to—that have that restriction. If I'm not mistaken, Hanson, too, has its own rule where members of the finance community—
Correct.
—can't be selectmen. What it comes down to, Joe, is we went through the terminology. We tried to be careful, because we did try not to—not to include everybody, as the people of Carver did. We tried to be very careful in how we worded this, so that we could have people who don't work in those areas who could run. Okay? What I can tell you is, we started going down the path of doing comparisons of how many towns had it. It—we—I stopped, because it—it made sense to me. It made sense. And I also started to try to do comparisons on what other towns had it, in terms of our population, in terms of what another town's population is. And then I realized afterwards that what we're trying to address here is essentially human nature, right? And human nature's the same, whether you're a town of 10,000, 50,000, whatever. It doesn't matter. And that's what we're trying to avoid. So, I—I understand what you're saying. I do. I respect it, but I'd like to keep the article as it is. Thank you.
All right. And I think we have debated this extensively, and taking Mr. Edgell's admonition, we will move to a vote. All those in favor of Article 25, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, signify by saying nay.
Nay.
In the opinion of the chair, the nays have it. Is there a motion to take account? I'm shocked, shocked, that there was such a thing. I'm just going through the motions, people. All right. If we could please have the tellers, all those in favor of Article 25, please signify by raising up your blue cards at this time. Hold them high and keep them up until you've been counted, please.
One. I counted it twice, to be sure.
Thank you. Mr. Weeks.
Eighteen.
Eighteen. Ms. Kemet.
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine. All those opposed to Article 25, please signify by raising your cards at this time.
Okay. I've got 14.
14. Mr. Weeks.
Six.
Six.
I have 28, and for purposes of a quorum, I saw at least two people who did not vote either way.
By a vote of 58 to 48, the Article 25 is adopted. Article 26, Mr. Ellis.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I move to vote to delete in its entirety the existing Table of Contents section of the Town of Hanson, Plymouth County, Massachusetts, Land Use Regulations zoning bylaw, and accept in its entirety a recodified Table of Contents section dated July 16, 2015, of the Town of Hanson, Plymouth County of Massachusetts, Land Use Regulations zoning bylaw, on file at the office of the town clerk.
Do we have a second? Seconded. Mr. Ellis.
The current zoning bylaws were recodified at the special town meeting on October 2014. This document did not include a new Table of Contents section. The Table of Contents has been revised to reflect the recodification of the zoning bylaws, and involved a change in the format, layout, and numbering structure of the bylaw. This is purely a housekeeping change. There are no amendments to the language of the bylaw.
Thank you. And we will need a two-thirds vote on this article. Any questions or comments on Article 26? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 26 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it by a two-thirds vote. Article 27, Mr. Ellis.
Thank you. I move the town vote to amend the Town of Hanson, Plymouth County of Plymouth, Massachusetts, Land Use Regulations zoning bylaw, Section 7C, the Table of Dimensional Requirements, Note 4, accessory buildings, to reduce the rear or side yard setback requirements for accessory buildings from 20 feet distance to the property line to 10 feet setback from the rear or side property line. A copy of the proposed amendment to the Town of Hanson zoning bylaws may be reviewed at the office of the town clerk, 542 Liberty Street, Hanson, Massachusetts.
Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded. Mr. Ellis.
The current town zoning bylaws established a 20-foot rear or side property line setback requirement for accessory buildings. This amendment will reduce the rear side—the rear or side property line setback requirements to a distance of 10 feet.
Are there any questions or comments on Article 27? Oh, Ms. Arena.
Barbara Arena, 131 Whitman Street. I just had a question through you, Mr. Moderator, for clarification on what constitutes an accessory building? I've heard the term shed, but no dimensional restrictions around what a shed might be.
Mr. Ellis.
Okay. The building inspector, just a little light on the subject. The building inspector asked for this, and he had a number of reasons for this, and I'll read some of them. He gave me a letter proposed. Why should we change our law regarding accessory structures? Many residents call this office—this is the building inspector now—calls this office asking for a setback for an accessory structure. When we tell them 20 feet from the property line and 20 feet from the house, they express that it would—it will locate the shed or accessory structure in the middle of a backyard, and there are—there will be not enough room for anything else in the yard. And he goes on to say, "Several times, the residents simply put the shed and accessory structures up with no permit because of the restrictions." Another thing he mentions, most surrounding towns have a 5-foot or 10-foot setback on accessory buildings. This proposed change will not apply to commercial properties, it's just residential properties. Keep in mind, the Town of Hanson does not have a sewer—town sewer, and a lot of backyards are full with leachant fields, which this restricts where sheds and accessory structures can go. He also mentions that many properties contain wetlands towards the rear of the property, restricting the usable portion of the lot, so it becomes more restrictive. He's got here, "The definition of an accessory structure represents the structure is incidental to the primary use. It is typically a building to keep your outdoor equipment in," meaning lawnmowers and snowblowers.
Does that answer your question, Ms. Arena?
Uh, no. There's no size, like, is it 10 by 10, 10 by 12, 20 by 20? My son has a lot of outdoor equipment that if he stored indoors, would be rather extensive.
That's a good question. I don't know if I can really answer that, but typically, it's a shed, and the sheds, I think—I believe, are 120 square feet that don't require a building permit.
Right. Right.
And in doing that, what happens is, they end up putting it wherever they want to. Now, if they go beyond—that, then it requires a building permit. Correct?
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 27—oh, we need a two-thirds vote on this as well.
Two-thirds, yes.
So, all those in favor of Article 27 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 27 is adopted. Once again—
By a two-thirds.
Oh, by a two-thirds vote. Once again, please come out to vote tomorrow. Hope to see you all there. Otherwise, I adjourn this special town meeting.